Okay, so we are now recording. Thank you all for joining us. My name is Melanie Sheehan. I'm the Chair of the Mount Aschutney Prevention Partnership. And we are a public health coalition whose mission is to inspire community action that promotes health and positive environments. We've decided to host these information sessions. And we care about this issue because, you know, residents are being given a great responsibility to set public health policy. And policy ends up affecting everyone in a community regardless of individual opinion and viewpoint. So these decisions are to be taken very seriously and with a broader view of the entire community. This is an information session. We are asking for respectful dialogue. People can have strong opinions about these topics related to legal cannabis. When speaking to ask a question, we don't have an idea of how many folks we're going to have or how our time will be structured. We only have an hour, so please be brief. And if you're used to working with Zoom or if you're able to scroll your mouse to the bottom of your screen, there is an icon that is a chat box. Diane, you've already used that. Thank you for that. You can be putting questions in the chat box throughout. So I just want to introduce my colleagues Courtney Hillhouse. If you want to just give a wave, Courtney is a Mount Aschutney Prevention Partnership employee. She's a colleague and will help monitor the chat this afternoon. And Alice Stewart is will be our presenter in just a few moments. Next slide, Alice. So we just wanted to start very briefly about what we're talking about with cannabis and sort of the difference between pot versus hemp. Both pot and hemp are cannabis plants. Genetic makeup and variety of strains makes the difference between the two of them sort of complex, hard to describe. But overall, pot contains delta nine tetrahydrocannabinol or THC. And THC containing cannabis is what causes a high or sort of a mental, you know, changes the level of consciousness. That feeling of euphoria that people get when they use when they use pot. Hemp again is a cannabis plant, but it contains less than 0.3% of THC. So folks have, there's anecdotal evidence that they have therapeutic benefits of using cannabis products without getting high. Cannabidiol or CBD oil is what is extracted from the hemp plant, contains little to no THC. CBD sales in Vermont have been legal since the passing of the 2018 federal farm bill. So we already have CBD products for sale in retail environments across Vermont. And this new law, Act 164, that passed in October of 2020 through the Vermont Legislature, is making cannabis pot sales legal through regulation in Vermont. So we just wanted to provide a little bit of context. When we talk about, you know, the articles 25 and 26 talk about cannabis retail sales. And we just wanted to clarify if there's making sure there's no confusion between cannabis CBD already being sold in stores versus, you know, the pot regulation. Okay, I'm going to zip it and turn it over to Alice from here.
Thanks, Melanie. So we're going to start with a disclaimer. We are not attorneys. Nothing that we're saying here should be construed as legal advice. The information that we're providing is based on our reading of Act 164, consultation with legislators and their staff, information gleaned from legislative hearings and research on experiences in other countries and states that have legalized retail sales of cannabis and cannabis products. We're providing this information as a service to the voters of Windsor to help them make informed decisions on warned articles 25 and 26. And we are not advocating for a specific vote on either article. So the first thing we've got is the warning language. Article 25, shall the town of Windsor permit the operation of cannabis retailers licensed by the state of Vermont pursuant to seven VSA section 863? And article 26, shall the town of Windsor permit the operation of integrated licensees licensed by the state of Vermont to engage in the activities of a cultivator, wholesaler, product manufacturer, retailer, and testing laboratory of cannabis and cannabis products pursuant to seven VSA section 863? So the first question we wanted to talk about is why are these articles on the Windsor warning? One of the questions that we got in advance from a Windsor resident was whether there was anything going on with the legislature to try to give towns more time to decide on retail cannabis. And there's nothing in Act 164 that requires towns to vote now or at any other point on opt-in. So, sorry, I got distracted because somebody just pinged be admitted to the room. So I lost my train of thought, excuse me.
I can get the admissions from here, Alice.
Yeah, thanks. It just, anyway, um, so Act 164 allows but doesn't require towns to opt in on retail cannabis through a majority vote via Australian ballot. A cannabis retailer cannot get a state license to open a store in a town that has not voted to opt in. These opt-in votes can occur at town meeting or at a special meeting called for that purpose. The Windsor Select Board decided to warn these articles for the 2021 March Town Meeting. Only a handful of towns in Vermont are voting on retail cannabis this March. So there are six types of licenses available under the law. Those include retail, cultivator, wholesaler, product manufacturer, laboratory, and integrated. An integrated license includes all of the other license types. So only two types of licenses actually require a town to opt in, and those are the retail and then the integrated license, but only for the retail function. So the other four license types do not require a town vote. For instance, if someone wanted to set up a grow operation somewhere in Windsor, they would need to get a state license, a state cultivator license, but they would not need to get a town license or a town vote to opt in for that grow operation. So what can you do with a retail license? The holder of a retail license can transport, possess, and sell cannabis and cannabis products to the public for consumption off-site. There is no onsite use allowed under the law. It's, so in other words, there wouldn't be any smoking lounges or things like that. This is intended for people to buy the cannabis and cannabis products and then take them home to consume them. And retailers can sell up to one ounce of cannabis or the equivalent in cannabis products to adults 21 or older. It has to be verified with a government issued photo ID similar to purchasing alcohol or tobacco. Internet ordering and delivery are currently prohibited. So another question that we got was whether the retail referred to in the articles on the warning were medical dispensaries or some other kind of retail. So we thought we would briefly go over what the difference is between a retail licensee and a medical dispensary. The retail license in Act 164 is a license to sell cannabis for adult use. Medical dispensaries sell to patients and caregivers that have a medical cannabis card. And the dispensaries sell only to residents of Vermont with verified debilitating medical conditions. Interestingly, medical dispensaries are permitted to do several things that retailers are not, such as delivery, letting people buy cannabis without leaving their cars, selling cannabis products with higher THC amounts, and selling larger amounts to a customer. So what's an integrated license? As defined under the statute, it means a person licensed by the board, which is the Cannabis Control Board, to engage in the activities of a cultivator, wholesaler, product manufacturer, retailer, and testing laboratory. So what that means is that a company with an integrated license can grow it. They can sell it to other companies to sell in their own retail stores. They can sell it themselves in their retail store. They can manufacture products like edibles, and they can conduct testing operations either for their own cannabis or for cannabis produced by others. So who can get an integrated license? It's very limited. Integrated licenses are available only to an applicant and its affiliates that hold a dispensary registration as of April 1st of 2022. There are currently five dispensaries licensed in Vermont, and those are owned by three companies. An applicant can get only one integrated license. So it's a little unclear. There are companies that own two dispensaries, so it's not really clear right now whether or not they can get more than just the one license. So it's possible there will be only three integrated licenses issued. There have been questions about who owns these medical dispensaries. So I'm going to apologize that these images are not super well-defined. I took them from the websites of these companies, so I apologize for their lack of contrast. The top image is Ianthus Capital, which owns Grassroots Vermont in Brandon. And as you can see, they have operations in New England, Florida, and the southwestern United States. Care Leaf, which is the map at the bottom, is a Massachusetts-based company. They own Fido Care Vermont in Bennington and the Vermont Patients Alliance in Montpelier. And you can see similar to Ianthus, they have operations around the country. The other two dispensaries are owned by a Vermont company, and those are the Champlain Valley Dispensary in Burlington and South Burlington, and Southern Vermont Wellness in Brattleboro and Middlebury.
Alice, do we have, you've provided the names of those other corporations. Do we have the name of the company that owns the two in Vermont already?
So when you look it up on the filings with the SEC, the name of the company wasn't super clear. It just had the name of the person. So I just, I didn't.
But yeah, better not to do.
I didn't feel that was helpful to include on the slide, but thanks for the question. But it is a Vermont-based company, based on the SEC filings. So some other common questions about integrated licenses are can integrated licensees set up multiple retail operations around the state, sort of like a mini franchise? And the answer to that is no. Under the statute, they can only have one retail location. And then another question was are integrated licensees limited to opening a retail outlet in the town where they operate their medical dispensary? The answer to that question is also no, they are not limited. So in other words, the dispensary in Brattleboro is not limited to opening their retail store in Brattleboro should they choose to open a retail store. And we had to research this a little bit. There was an email exchange with a legislative policy analyst who clarified this question for us. And also let us know that the location would be determined by two things, at least two things, maybe more. One is the location would be determined by which towns have voted to opt in to allow retail sales. And then also the Cannabis Control Board would be looking at geographic distribution of licenses as a factor as to where they would actually grant these retail licenses for the integrated licensees. So the timeline, so for integrated licenses, the on April 1st of 2022, so a little over a year from now, the current dispensaries can apply for an integrated license. And those integrated licenses will be granted on or before May 1st. And they will be allowed to sell immediately once they've gotten their integrated license. For regular retail, which is Article 25 on the Windsor Warning, retail applications for licenses can begin on September 1st of 2022. And then the licenses would be issued on October 1st of 2022, so a little bit more than a year and a half from now. So hopefully, now that I've tried to explain what an integrated license is, you know, this is, I'm going to stop in a minute and just ask whether there are any questions. I put the warning language up there again. And just want to remind everybody that even though the article lists all of the license types, only the retail license portion of the integrated license requires a town to vote to opt in. So I'm going to pause there and see if there were any questions about integrated licenses before we move on.
I'm not seeing anything in the chat.
Look like Carrie might have a question.
Yeah, I have a question. So, so there, there are three companies that are dispensaries currently, I think was the math.
Yes.
And those are, they're the only ones by virtue of the fact that they're dispensaries that can apply to be an integrated, for an integrated license?
Correct.
Okay, so there are only three, there are only three players in this thing?
Correct.
Okay.
And they all.
Possibly five. If, if they, if integrated, if companies, if companies can apply for an integrative license by dispensary, the maximum would be five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The language in the statute says an applicant and its affiliates, which is where it gets a little confusing because, you know, like if they have two sites, is that other site the affiliate? It's a little unclear.
Yeah.
But it is a very limited pool of applicants.
Very, yeah, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions before we move on? Okay. So another question that comes up sometimes is about the money related to retail cannabis. So there's four types of taxes and fees that are discussed in Act 164. Those are state license fees, local license fees, the 6% sales and use tax that we all pay whenever we buy anything, you know, other than food and clothing, and then a 14% excise tax that's specific to retail cannabis and that does not apply to medical cannabis. So a lot of times people want to know if our town has retail cannabis stores, do we benefit from these taxes and fees? And in general, the answer is, is no, there isn't like a monetary benefit. The State Cannabis Control Board is going to establish local fees that will help towns defray the cost of retail cannabis. And I did, I've got the definition from the dictionary here on defray because it means to bear part or all of the costs of. It doesn't include profit and it doesn't guarantee that all of the costs will be covered. It just means that at least part of them will be covered. So probably at best, it would be a break even proposition with these local fees. Other taxes and fees go to support the operations of the Cannabis Control Board, are earmarked for specific uses, or are returned to the general fund. There is an exception for municipalities that have a 1% local option sales tax, which would be applied to retail cannabis sales, just like any other retail sales. But Windsor is not a 1% local option sales tax town, so that 1% does not apply in this case. So I've got a chart here on this slide that shows where the money goes. It just sort of summarizes, because this can be a little complicated, but the state license fees go to support the operation of the State Cannabis Control Board. Local license fees are collected and given to the state. And then the Cannabis Control Board takes a cut of those local license fees to pay for their costs of administration and collection. And then on a quarterly basis, they send the local, what's left of the local license fees to the towns where the fees were collected. The sales and use tax, that 6% tax for retail cannabis, all of it is going to be used to fund a grant program to support after-school and summer learning programs. So it's one, that's 100% dedicated to that grant program. The 14% excise tax is a little bit more complicated. So when it's paid, it goes into the cannabis regulation fund. And it, one of the purposes is if there are, if there's not enough money from the state license fees to cover the costs of the Cannabis Control Board, then any deficits would be covered by that excess tax, excise tax. So at the end of each fiscal year, if there's a positive balance in the cannabis regulation fund, that positive balance goes to the general fund. Of those transfers to the general fund, 30% of that excise tax not to exceed $10 million a year goes to fund substance misuse prevention. And then the rest of the, the, the other 70% of the excise tax just goes into the general fund. And currently, it would just be up to the legislature to decide how they want to use it. Each year, there are some proposals kicking around in the General Assembly to dedicate other portions of that excess excise tax to specific topics, but none of that has happened yet.
Alice, Diane put a question in, what costs would the town have to bear to support a cannabis retail operation? So I think it goes back to the defray cost slide. So what, what, what would some of those costs potentially be?
Right, so this, it's not covered in the statute. I did do some thinking about this because I thought somebody might ask that question. For instance, if you have a local cannabis control commission, which I'm going to get to in a couple of minutes, you know, they would have an oversight and enforcement role. So if, you know, I'm thinking maybe like a larger town like Burlington that might have several retail cannabis establishments, they might have to hire a part-time inspector who would go around and make sure that these retail operations are complying with the law. So obviously, that, that would be a cost. I don't know, Melanie, if you have heard any other types of costs, you know, the, the oversight and enforcement is the one that comes to mind for me.
Yeah, I think some of the costs to be thinking about could be increased in law enforcement needs for impaired driving. You know, you might, if you have an influx of tourism or other folks coming from surrounding area, you know, traffic control could be, you know, in states that, that legalized initially, they, they saw an increase in some social costs around homelessness, things like that. So it's, it's fairly new. We don't, in Vermont, the, the way that Vermont is approaching this policy decision is very different than states that have legalized elsewhere. So we're sort of in a Petri dish here. But I think other than some of those direct costs for control board and enforcement, that's probably the most clear costs right now.
Excuse me, are there any other questions before we move on? Okay, so I've mentioned the Cannabis Control Board a few times. I deliberately didn't do all the definitions at the beginning because I know that can kind of make people glaze over. So I'm, I'm going to kind of, I'm coming back now to, to explain what that State Cannabis Control Board is. It's the independent commission that's charged with implementing and administering the laws for adult-use cannabis in the state. And it's responsible for rulemaking and compliance and enforcement of licensed cannabis establishments. And that is the entity that's going to make the recommendations on those local fees to help defray costs incurred, incurred by towns. That, that's part of their job. So they have a lot of responsibilities. There, there's a list of things that they're supposed to make recommendations on and do rulemaking about that goes on for pages and pages. And I'm not going to cover all of those things. I just highlighted a few things on the slides that I thought were sort of more, maybe more relevant to municipalities. One of the things they're going to do is advertising. They're going to come up with what the oversight and inspection requirements are. They are going to decide, or they're going to make a recommendation to the legislature as to whether cannabis and cannabis products should have a minimum amount of CBD to aid in the prevention of cannabis-induced psychosis. And then they're also going to make recommendations on whether customers will be able to order online for pickup and whether stores can do delivery to customers. As I mentioned earlier, that online, online ordering and delivery right now is specifically prohibited in statute. But there's another provision that says that they want the Cannabis Control Board to make recommendations to the General Assembly about whether they, they should reconsider that issue. So going back to that cannabis-induced psychosis bullet, over the decades of breeding, breeders have been trying to increase the amount of THC in cannabis and cannabis products. And so when you do that, it decreases other compounds, including CBD. And CBD has sort of a mitigating effect on the psychosis-inducing properties of cannabis. And so what the legislature has asked is that the Cannabis Control Board do some research and figure out whether or not Vermont should say you have to have at least this amount of CBD in your cannabis and cannabis products to help prevent cannabis-induced psychosis. So it's really about that ratio of THC to CBD in products in Vermont.
Alice, we have a later slide on potency, so we can provide a little more information on that as well.
So the Cannabis Control Board timeline. The Cannabis Control Board members were supposed to start work on January 19th of 2021. So just a little over a month ago. However, the members haven't been appointed or confirmed by the legislature yet. They had over 100 applications, work is ongoing, but clearly they're not on schedule for what was envisioned in the statute. They were supposed to make recommendations to the General Assembly on several areas, including advertising by April 1st. That is, that appears unlikely to happen now. They, they're probably at least two months behind schedule, possibly more. In a Senate Judiciary hearing the other week, they noted that they thought that the Cannabis Control Board probably would not be up and running until legislative session is over. And that obviously creates an issue because the recommendations were supposed to be received by April 1st so that there was time for legislative action on those recommendations in this legislative session. And now it looks like that might not happen. But the Judiciary Committee and possible other, possibly other committees are working, they're aware of the problem. And so they're working on addressing some of the rulemaking issues themselves, such as advertising that was specifically called out in that Judiciary Committee hearing. So in addition to the State Cannabis Control Board, there are also local cannabis control commissions. So towns that have retail cannabis stores may establish a cannabis control commission, but it's not required by the statute. It's, it's an option. A local cannabis control commission would give towns a say in who gets a retail license and under what conditions. And the commissioners could be the members of the Select Board or for towns that have a liquor control commission, they might use that as their cannabis control commission. And you can include others with, you know, for instance, people with relevant expertise. It's not limited to the, the Select Board. If a town has a local cannabis control commission, an applicant for a retail license has to get the local control license before the State Cannabis Control Board will issue them a license. So what do these local cannabis control commissions do? They, they issue local control licenses. They also decide whether to add conditions to retail cannabis licenses. They're restricted in how they can do that, though it has to be through a bylaw adopted pursuant to 24 VSA 4414 or through ordinances that regulate signs or public nuisances. So in the absence of a local cannabis control board, existing zoning and ordinances will still apply to retail cannabis. So for instance, in Windsor, there is a signage ordinance, and that would apply to retail cannabis if the town voted to opt in. But we do want to highlight that there's some concern about the wording of eight, excuse me, wording of section 863 among town attorneys, including Windsor's town attorney and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So it's, the language is considered confusing, potentially internally inconsistent, not well-written. There's a lot of comments from town attorneys around the state. But we were able to find out that the drafters of the legislation did intend for zoning to apply. So there is legislative intent for zoning to apply. However, it is possible that it might have to go to the courts to get resolved because of the concerns about the way that the, the section is worded. So just to touch really briefly on public nuisances. Public nuisances are one of those things that, under Vermont law, towns are allowed to determine what a public nuisance is and then what the town wants to do to mitigate that. So examples of what might consist of a public nuisance in a retail cannabis situation. If you have a cannabis store and customers come into the store and they buy cannabis products, and they go out and they sit down on the sidewalk and start smoking, that's illegal. So that's breaking the law. That's not a public nuisance issue. It is illegal to consume cannabis in public. So if, though, they throw the wrappers from their product on the ground and create a litter situation, the town could define that as a public nuisance. Or for instance, if there's a parking lot next to the store and customers tend to gather in the parking lot, and they're not smoking, but they're talking really loudly and bothering neighbors in the evening, you know, that might be considered a public nuisance. You know, it's really up to the town to see what the situations are and what they define as a public nuisance and then how they want to mitigate that. So as long as they adopt the ordinance pursuant to 24 VSA 2020, 2291, a local cannabis control board can, can commission can, can put those kinds of protections in place. So other things that the local commissions can do is decide what to do if somebody violates the conditions on the license. You know, do they suspend the license to sell or revoke it? And then they also administer rules furnished to them by the State Cannabis Control Board. So just a few other questions that we got on opt-in that we wanted to cover. And I did want to mention that some of, a lot of the questions that we're talking about today are questions that have been raised across the state, not necessarily in Windsor. We do have a slide at the end of the presentation where you can see the questions that were specifically asked by Windsor residents. So these are, these are questions that have been raised elsewhere. But we, we thought since people were asking the questions, it might be helpful for people in Windsor to hear the answers. So one of those questions is what if our town votes to opt in now but decides later to opt out? So the, the statute specifically envisions that towns can vote to rescind their opt-in vote. However, if a town votes later to stop issuing licenses, any existing retailer or integrated operations are grandfathered in. So if the town decided they didn't like retail cannabis, you can't get rid of it by opting out if it's already in place. Those existing businesses are allowed to continue as businesses. And then another question was what if our town votes down opt-in? Can we vote again later if there's more clarity about what's happening? And the answer is yes, there's no thing in the statute that says you only get to vote once. So towns could bring the issue up again at a, at the next town meeting or at a special meeting. You know, it's, it's, there's nothing that says you can't vote more than once on the issue. So I'm going to turn it over to Melanie to talk about some public health questions that we got in just a second. But before I did that, I just wanted to know whether there are any other questions about retail licenses or Article 25 on the warning. Does it look like we're ready to go forward?
I think so. I don't see any questions in the chat.
Okay.
So someone had submitted a question about what are some of the public health impacts from other states who've done this, you know, related to retail cannabis. Before I share this research, I just again would want to reiterate that the way Vermont has chosen to approach this policy is very different from what others, how other states have done it. So it's really hard to compare sort of apples to apples. In general, the research that's most recent, you know, 2019 to 20, you know, 2019, 2020, I tried to look at the most recent data because sometime has played out. There's current evidence that's, that's limited in the capacity to confidently conclude that changes are the result of cannabis legalization. There are inferences, there are some studies that have, you know, limited population sets. And the impacts of the true impacts on public health may take years to become apparent. From the research, and there's some cited sources here. Emergency room, sorry, my, can't, microphone's going a little funky. Emergency room attendances for cannabis-related medical conditions listed here. Alice, is, is that vibration just in my headset? I just want to make sure I'm not annoying.
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so I sound okay then?
Yes.
Okay, good, sorry. So, you know, acute adverse psychological effects. Hyperemesis is a, is a condition of repeated unstoppable vomiting. And accidental poisoning of children has increased as a result of these policy changes. In the first three states that legalized, motor vehicle crashes initially increased by a combined 6%. By combined, I meant the three states that were cited in this study, but later fell as a result of intense intervention. but later fell as a result of intense intervention and campaigns by public safety organizations. There's a lot of research on both sides that says, you know, increase. It crashes go up, fatalities go up. And then there's a lot of data that says, no, they didn't change. And so it's really hard to tell. But this study I have cited by the insurance journals seem to have a pretty overall stance on that. It is very clear that adult use cannabis has increased. And that's, that's normal. When you increase access to a substance, you know, folks who haven't tried it before, now that it's legal, may try it. Or you might have folks who use it at a certain level and then increase use. Youth use has not further increased with recreational cannabis laws. Studies show that increases did occur when medical marijuana laws were passed. Most states that, that pass recreational cannabis law and policy started with a medical marijuana law many years prior. So there is that data set. And again, talking about potency, the average potency of marijuana has increased. In the 60s and 70s, the average percentage was below, you know, it was around 2 to 3%. And then in the 90s, it sort of edged to 4%. And by 2015, it was at eight and a half percent, which is a 212% increase. In 2019, the cannabis, the potency is now close to 20%. In the Vermont law, our legislatures did put in THC content limits. Those limits are currently set at 30% for THC flower or THC in the flower product and 60% in concentrates, food products, gummy bears, you know, lollipops would be allowed to have THC potency at 60%. So there are documented studies that show greater concern for mental health conditions, anxiety, depression and psychotic episodes in these higher potency products. And this is what Alice was alluding to before, when she was talking about the cannabis, the THC to CBD ratio is proving to be a very important factor because as these potency products, the increase in THC goes up and CBD goes down. That's where the mental health conditions and psychosis is showing up. So that's that slide. Any questions on this right now? Okay, I think we can move on. There was one question about Amsterdam was submitted that Amsterdam seemingly had success in, by increasing access to cannabis. They saw a decrease in harder drugs. Again, I would say the drug policy in the Netherlands consists of an integrated approach between drug supply, prevention, treatment and harm reduction. They have integrated treatment services that provide comprehensive supports and services targeting vulnerable populations like, you know, homelessness, mental health conditions. It's really, again, can't really compare to the United States policies that we have here. There was a successful decrease, dramatic decrease in drug injection prevalence. So folks who were addicted to opiates, perhaps injecting heroin. They did see a decrease in that type of drug behavior. They did say no new influx of problematic opiate users. So that it sort of stabilized the numbers. You know, it didn't, it didn't continue to rise. And then problematic opiate use in general did drop over time. However, with that, they did see slightly higher increases in prevalence of other addictive substances such as cannabis, GHB, which is a synthetic stimulant and alcohol. The number of problematic cannabis users increased from 16% in 1994 to 62% in 2008. And they are seeing more crack cocaine use in the last 15 years. So that was the, I think if the person who submitted that question is, is available this afternoon, I'd be interested in seeing the source of the data that they were looking at. Perhaps there's other information out there, but this is what I was able to find. So Alice, I think I saw, let me just open the chat. How is smoking pot any less damaging to the lungs than smoking cigarettes? There is some information, Diane, about lung. I'd have to, I don't, I don't have that in front of me now. I can certainly email you some information about that. It's, it's just, there's just as many carcinogens in cannabis smoke as there are in cigarettes. And so, you know, we, one thing to note about smoking specifically with youth, you know, in, in February of 2019, we saw in the news, there was this big increase in eValley, which was a lung disease with kids, with adolescents and young folks who were vaping. And what we know now is that vaping products are, are a delivery device, not just for tobacco, but also adolescents and youth often use, and even young adults use vaping to ingest hash oil, THC oil. And perhaps other, you know, some of the vaping devices are made and designed for flower, cannabis flower. So really inhaling anything into the lungs, regardless of what it is, is just not good for your lungs in general. Oh, so these were the questions that were submitted by Windsor residents that we attempted to build answers into our presentation this afternoon. And I think we've covered them, but I think now is a good time to open up. And if folks have other questions, feel free to come off of mute or enter the chat and we can do our best to answer those.
On the cost, on the cost of the local community, are you hearing my voice?
Yes, Ted, we can hear you.
Okay, on the cost incurred by local communities, direct and indirect. As I understand it, some of, some of these, or as many as feasible will be covered by states giving, the state giving money back. But to the extent that the full costs are not reimbursed, as I, is it correct to say that the only opening for the town is either to opt out of the program or raise taxes or cut services? I don't know if that's a question anyone there can answer.
So the statute just simply says that there will be this system of local fees that will help towns defray the cost. And that's why I included that dictionary definition, because that just says bare part or all of the costs of. So possibly the cost will be covered and possibly they won't. And the statute is not guaranteed that they're going to cover all the costs. So I think it would be up to the town to figure out what to do in that situation if the town had opted in to retail cannabis.
But I, the town of Windsor, it is, can't enact a 1% sales tax, for example. And I'm not, there are other ways the town could pass on any additional costs that are not reimbursed by the state.
So I was in a meeting yesterday where people were talking about the 1% of local option sales tax and whether towns that don't already have it could get it in order to make money off of retail cannabis. And one of the points was made is that when you apply for that local option sales tax, it has a dedicated purpose and it's usually economic development. So it, you wouldn't be able to repurpose the, the sales tax revenue for something other than what you, the state had given you permission to collect it for, if that makes sense. So I, I don't think that the 1% local option tax, you know, I mean Windsor might decide to do it for a different reason, but I don't think it addresses the concern that you're raising.
Thanks, Alice. There was another question, I think in the chat from Jane, does the opt in include sale of CBD? It does not include sale of CBD. CBD products have been legal for sale in Vermont since 2018 when the federal farm bill passed, which legalized hemp and hemp products and CBD. So those are already allowed in this act 164 and opt in measures specifically talking about the retail sale of adult use of recreational pot, which includes THC, which is sort of the psycho altering compound in cannabis and in pot. I think Jane, you might have hopped on after we did a slide on the difference between pot and hemp and CBD. And then Diane asked, have you looked at Colorado's experience with retail cannabis over the last few years? Has the impact there been similar to the Netherlands? Yeah, again, I think we, we tried to report our findings overall on what legalized states, you know, what the impact has been overall across the nation with, I think we're at 12 states now that have legalized. Looking specifically at Colorado and being myopic isn't always helpful because they were the first state to legalize by a ballot measure. So residents just voted to make it legal and there wasn't really a planning process or government organized initiative to do that. It didn't go, it was by popular vote. It didn't go through a legislative process. So there's been a lot of lessons learned in Colorado. I will say 80% of towns, municipalities in Colorado have opted out. So there are the big population centered towns that, that have a lot of density of stores that sell marijuana. You know, I think anecdotally, when we, well, before COVID, we were going to some policy, public health policy marijuana summits. And, you know, hearing from other states and, you know, one of the, there are, there are municipal mechanisms that can be built into zoning such as buffer zones, you know, outlet location where in town would a, would a store be located? You know, how close to a school or childcare center or a playground would one be located? And then there's, there's density too. So, you know, if there are, if stores are allowed in a municipality, how many would the, would there be a cap on how many? You know, density has been, has been an issue in Colorado and other states. But, you know, many towns have chosen not to opt in in Colorado as well. So I know that doesn't specifically answers your question, but that's, that's really all I have on Colorado at the moment.
Are there other questions?
I would like to add that we hope to help other towns in the state of Vermont address this issue. And if, if we're asked to do some consultations, so we are asking participants to take a survey, which I will pop in the chat here in just a minute. I don't know if Courtney, if you're still on and you have that, yeah, I'll have Courtney pop that into the chat. You know, we didn't, we didn't really go the full hour. Feel free to continue to ask questions, but in the chat is a link there. If you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes to answer our survey. It really does help us to, you know, how we can improve and, and support other towns. So we would be grateful if folks had a few minutes to take that. And we will, we can stay on if folks have other questions.
And we did want to note that this, these are being recorded to be shared with Windsor on air. So if you have neighbors or friends that weren't able to make it to the session that you think would benefit from it, we're not sure exactly when Paula's, Paula needs to do her a little bit of cleanup before they're posted, but they should be up there fairly soon. So I guess we could, we could send everybody an email just to let you know when it's posted.
Good idea, Alice.
There is a question in the chat, why have 80% of cities in Colorado decided to opt out?
I don't have any insight into that. I think they just went through a similar process to what Windsor's going through is my, is my guess. I, I will add that we have, we have worked with our regional planning partners at Two Rivers, Odequici Regional Commission and drafted a supporting healthy communities guide. It has, it has other policy related, it's not cannabis specific. But generally, a policy conversation like this starts with town residents getting together and having public forums to ask what, what is the vision for our town? What are the values of our town? What does our town want to invite our residents to participate in? Sometimes that language ends up in a town plan. Just what your foundational values are. And then from there, you can base your decisions. It's, it's really hard to, you know, these are, these are hard conversations, but they're important. And what you, what you, what you hope to do is that towns have some agreement on what are the values and what is the vision, the future vision for our town. When we work with towns on these issues, we really encourage them to think about a bigger picture, thinking about everyone in the community, youth, families, also people in recovery. We're, we're trying to increase more and more awareness on, you know, how to support folks in recovery. So those are sort of some public health lenses that we tend to look through. You know, towns might decide that they're very focused on economic development. I mean, I think Alice did a good job showing that this is not really a money making measure for towns. But perhaps in other states that states have decided that towns can make more money. They might choose an economic development lens or value set over a public health one, you know, but you know, you have a lot of responsibility before you. And I think it's, it would be really good idea for the town to organize some resident input. And, you know, just decide what, what do we want for our town now and in the future? And does this fit into that vision? So that, that's what we, we recommend that towns do that. Thank you, Diane. I'm seeing your chat. I believe that during Monday evening's town meeting, I believe Alice will be available if other folks in town have questions on these articles that come up. We'll be asking Alice to sort of be a act 164 consult on that. So there's an opportunity there to ask questions.
Yeah, we won't be doing the presentation during that informational hearing on Monday, but the town asked me if I would be willing to just kind of be on standby in case there were questions that Tom and Heather weren't able to respond to related to the act. So, so yes, I will be there to answer questions.
Okay, are there any other questions or thoughts coming forward? I think I'll go ahead and end the recording at this time. And I would just want to thank you all for participating in this information session and appreciate your time this afternoon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.